I'll call to order the Thursday, March 24, 2022 Town Council's special meeting at 7:04. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Bordelain, and I expect her to arrive shortly. Now for salute to the flag, everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Onto introduction of elected officials, Councilor Bumgarner.
Hello, everyone, Councilor Andre Bumgarner. Great to see a good turnout tonight.
Councilor McBride.
Good evening, everyone. David McBride, Councilor. Nice to see you all. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilor Juliette Parker. Thank you, guys, for coming out.
Councilor Rachel Franco, thank you for all attending.
I'm newly selected Mayor Melendez. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight.
Councilor Bruce Jones, thank you for coming.
Councilor Melinda Casiri, thank you for being here tonight.
And on Zoom, we have Councilor Westervelt.
Councilor Scott Westervelt.
Thank you. Okay, onto reading of public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the Groton Town Council will hold a public hearing on the FYE 2023 Annual Town Budget pursuant to Chapter 9, Section 9.3.1 of the Town Charter on Thursday, March 24 at 7:00 p.m. at the Groton Senior Center and also via Zoom. Full copy of the budget estimates will be on file with the town clerk for public inspection as well as online at the town's website. All right, on to budget presentations. First, we have Superintendent of Schools.
We're actually waiting for Chairman Watson. Could we have the town presentation first?
Sure. Manager Burr.
Oh, she just walked in.
Here it comes.
Okay.
I guess I know how to do this. You do know. Hello, friends. Sorry. These are yours, and these are mine. We're doing this together. Once again, I apologize to the Town Council for being late. It's good to see you. Bye, colleagues. Thank you. Hello, John.
Hello.
Hawaii. Hey, Sean. All right.
We're just getting the PowerPoint set up.
Awesome. This is the first time in two years I've seen such a full house in here. It's kind of nice, isn't it? It's really good to see everybody.
Actually, this is the first time I've been in the building. So while they're setting it up, I can go over my stuff, or at least the very beginning of the stuff. So what you're going to see highlighted today is what we are saying, what this budget is going to be able to give to us. We are, as a town, should be incredibly proud of the school district. You have, through your efforts, you've been able to put together, we have been able to put together three new buildings. The Groton Middle School, the Mystic River Magnet School, and the Thames River Magnet School. It's amazing, the project that we're doing. In fact, if I could do a quick plug while they're still trying to figure this out, is that next week, on Wednesday and Thursday, we are going to be having an open house. On Wednesday, it is going to be an open house for our five elementary magnet schools. And then on Thursday is going to be for the Groton Middle School. So we're hoping that you guys will be willing to do that. If you could just go on, actually, our Facebook page, which is another thing that we're very excited about, that we have launched in the past month, to RSVP to see that, to see not only just the three new buildings, but that to also check out every single one of the schools and the magnet programs that have been in the elementary. So that is something that we're...
That's Wednesday, and Thursday will be at the Groton Middle School.
Thank you.
And the time is 5:00 to 7:00.
What she said. This budget is also just to continue to promote our rigor, pushing our students. The one part that I think that we are really very excited about is our continued growth with our secondary campus. As you know, the Groton Middle School and the Fitch High School are in combination to each other. It allows a lot of synergy. It allows for a lot of sports use. We also have some really cool fields, if you haven't seen them. And with this campus and career, or the campus at Fitch High School, we also have, we're developing a careers pathway. We're in the second year of this grant, and it will allow our students, our high school students, to be exposed to different career options and pathways, whether they want to go off to college or whether they want to have a career. So we are, once again, just trying to meet all the needs of our students. The other thing, under the leadership of Susan Austin, we are really starting to have some phenomenal partnerships with Grasso Tech. You know, the two schools are so close to each other, yet we haven't had a lot of partnership. And so they are exploring, doing some music programs together. We're looking...
They're already doing it.
They're already doing music programs.
And robotics.
And robotics. And the other thing that is being explored is, we're allowing the Fitch High School students to, after school, to go down to Grasso Tech, do some programming, and actually earn credit. So that's the type of sort of partnership and collaboration that we are attempting to do. We're still, with this budget, we are still maintaining class sizes, that the board has set up on the parameters. We do that in October. This budget allows for that to kind of continue to happen. Even though our Teacher College Writer Project Grant is passed, we had it for sustainability, we actually had, we had like a teach the model, so that we have teachers who are teaching new teachers to come in, and we're able to continue on with that. I think I hit the ones that I wanted to hit on that.
Moving, Sean. Thank you.
This budget, also, as I mentioned earlier, we have five magnet elementary schools, because we have five elementary schools. And each elementary school has their own magnet theme, and this budget supports that. This budget also supports not only the day, school day curriculum, but it also supports our extracurricular activities. We have, it supports the one-to-one initiative with the computers for both the middle school and high school, and we are also able to maintain our, through an enterprise, is the Treehouse, which is our childcare program that we're very proud of, because it allows families to be able to work and keep their kids safe in a really well-designed, developmentally appropriate after-school and before-school program.
And summer. And summer program.
And summer, like she said. She's like my Vanna, but she's better. And then the other thing that this budget has also supports is that we have, at both the Groton Middle School and we have the high school, we share the expense of having two officer, we have...
School resource officer.
We have school resource officer, and that is a collaborative effort between the Board of Ed and the Town of Groton, which we are very appreciative of. I don't know if you can see these pictures, maybe you can't, but we have...
Sean, I need you to switch. No, this isn't working.
So one of the two pictures that are highlighted on the screen is that we received notification last year that we are Blue Ribbon School. Not many schools, not many districts have it. We happen to have two. And in these picture is actually Secretary of Education Mike Miguel Cordona was here to celebrate with us, along with Senator Courtney, which we were very excited about. That was a phenomenal day. What am I...
So, yep.
Yeah, okay, I got that.
Can you switch it now? Okay.
The computer's working like me today.
There we go. History.
All right. So one of the things that the board likes to sort of point out is that for multiple years, actually, we charted out for 11 of the years, is that we have sustained a zero-point increase in our budget, yet we continue to offer you incredible educational program. But just to know that it is very difficult to continuously sustain a 0.0 increase, or not even an increase.
The average is a .6, but you can kind of see a trend where you see the 0, 0, the 1.4, 1.95, 2.17, and I'm sure that that was a recovery. Then we went under, and then we went 0, 0, 1.25, 4, then another 0, 0. So it almost, you can see the trend line there. We try to have a very efficient budget, which I'm going to showcase tonight, and part of the reason we're able to have this quality education in International Baccalaureate District, just authorized for NYPD. We've had the IBDP program for a long time, and now we have an IB careers program. And we've received, as a competitive grant, about $10 million from Department of Defense Education Activities since, I guess, Dr. Grenier and I got here, over the years. And those funds are for specific purposes, for this targeted instruction, and it's outside of the budget. So, and I think that has been part of the reason we've been able to be so efficient with operations.
Go ahead. Thank you, Ron.
So this is how all school budgets are made. You have salaries and benefits in the blue. That is the majority of what you spend on a school budget. I've been doing this for a lot of years, and, you know, this is something that any district you go to, in any state, you'll see, what do we give our kids in school today? We give them high-quality teachers, paraprofessionals. We give them great custodians and lunch personnel and buses to go on. So all of the personnel piece is really the majority of the budget with benefits. It always seems to come out to be a 3.14 increase in the past three or four years, and that's really based on contracts for the contractual staff that have been negotiated. And we always have one of our town councilors to help us out with that, so we really appreciate it. Tuitions and contracted services is about 7.8%. You can see that in the reddish color. Transportation, which is in the green, is 7.2%. Utilities, telephones, networks, software, all that jazz, is 3.4%. And non-contractual expenses are 3.9% in the light blue. So 77.7% of a school budget is typically, and in this case, for this year, you know, personnel and benefits. Here's some of the specifics. I actually started with the superintendent's budget at 3.14, 3.4, and then with a lot of hard work with this Board of Ed, we were meeting two, three times a week, just about, really going through it item by item to see what we could do. And so you see that I've actually put a list of contractual pay increases that affected the 100s, which is your salaries. There was a 5% anticipated increase in insurance claims for the 200s. The 300s, cost of service and athletic trainer got moved from one category to the other, so that made the shift noticeable. We had lower expenses and more in-house services with purchased equipment, so we were able to do some of the work ourselves. Then we had an increased cost in bus transportation based on the contract that we're in. We had a 2% increase to site budgets and a reduction in some of the other supplies. And then in the 700s, it reflects equipment needs of the schools through their site budgets. And then 800s, which is dues and fees, our speech pathologists are licensed and contracted because they are really health providers, so that was done in their teacher contract. They're part of the teachers' union, and so we had some additional cost for that. But we were able to bring it down to a 2.22, you know, from a 3.4. So we really did due diligence. And 2.22 is less than even the salaries and the benefits that were contracted. So that means that we had to shave off in other places. So the budget last year was $77,438,090. This year, it's $79,157,271. Seventy-nine million, sorry. And I was a math teacher. I think we're ready to switch it over. So I wanted you to see this slide. We tried to do it 3D so we could really capture it. These are revenues that support the Board of Ed FY23 budget. If you look at the red state spending, we receive 25,404,500 in excess cost sharing, and that's significant. And we've really kept at that number. We've been an alliance district, which means that it's really an analysis of a lot of the school districts like ours that are in our same DURG that are really rated based on, you know, the number of free and reduced lunch and the assessments that the state does. So we were the last one in, and we're waiting to hear if we're going to graduate or not. But it has absolutely held secure that $25 million. So it also provides a lot of support, free professional learning, direct contact with the State of Connecticut Education. So we have really benefited in a great way for having that over the last five years. The other piece that you see, the blue federal dollars, our impact aid, which really comes from having, I found out this number, 1,250 military children in Groton, largest in the state. I'm very proud because I'm a submariner's daughter, so I'm back again after all these years. So I feel like that's the way we're taking care of that and those DODIA grants that we've competitively gone after. We've secured them because we've had good ideas and we have a lot of military children. And even though it comes to Groton, it's for all of our kids. So just like that impact aid, it goes right to the town, and that's used to also support the funding for the schools. There's something called special ed, excess cost, Medicaid, and other sources, which are another slice of the pie. So really, all of that together, all that comes into the town is to the tune of about $31 million to help support education. And I think my colleague, Ken Knight, is on, and he was going to speak to this next graph. I think, you go one back?
Yeah, one back. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Hi, my name is Ken Knight. I'm the business manager for the school district. What this slide is doing is it's just showing you a calculation of how we determine how much of the budget is to be funded by the town. We're taking the operating budget of $79,157,271, less that almost $31 million a number that Superintendent Austin just referenced, and those are state and federal revenues that get sent directly to the town to support this budget. So that leaves $48,362,733 that is to be funded by the local taxpayers. The next section down compares that $48 million number against the proposed property tax that is proposed to be collected in this budget of $104,119,613. And so it just shows that the portion of the budget that's funded by local taxpayers is approximately 46.4% of that property tax collected.
And I think the good news was that we noticed that from FY22 to FY23, while the actual number of the portion of the Board of Ed budget funded by the town has gone up, the percent of proposed property tax collected from '22 to '23 has gone down. So that was just kind of interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm back. So this slide really helps kind of understand that when you think about, and Ken, I think that you were the person a couple of years ago that helped us kind of think about it this way, is that there's a certain amount of money that it costs to teach a child. And what you can see, we went back all the way from 2011, is that we have, for most of the years, we are below the average in terms of the State of Connecticut in what it costs, the tax, what it costs us to teach every child. And I just think it's, really, it's because you've charged us to be good stewards of the district's money, of the town's money, and this is what we've been able to sort of provide This is a slightly, not slightly, this is just kind of puts this in graph if you need to take a look at our local districts. Susan mentioned the DURG, but this is, which is a different group, set group of school districts, but these are the people that are around our area. And you notice that actually in Groton, outside of Ledgerd, our cost per pupil is the smallest. And then when you compare us with our DURG, which is our district...
Reference group.
Reference group. And there's several different references that put you into different groups. And if you can see, we are with...
That's the next slide.
That's...
There we go.
Perfect, thank you. Is that we're put together with Bloomfield and Hamden and Manchester and Killenly, Groton Steel. We take it seriously to make sure that we are as cost-efficient as possible, and we are in the lower end of that, even in our district reference group.
They basically take your whole budget, divide it by the number of students that you have. So that's how they get that number.
And once again, our Board of Ed is pretty proud of our mission statement and our goals. So our mission statement is teaching and learning. And we're going to do that by providing dynamic, rigorous curriculum to ensure effective and engaging instruction and embrace excellent learning environment. And over the past couple of years, we have created a belief statement, which is to cultivate an environment of diversity, equality, and inclusiveness.
We have a couple other pictures of the kids and the new schools and the new playground equipment.
If for anything, you guys should see the new playgrounds. They are just like really awesome.
You want to be a kid again.
I guess that kind of talks to my agent. Once again, I appreciate your patience with me being a tad late. I don't know if people were recognized on the sidelines, or a few of our board members, it's Matt Schulman, Katrina Fitzgerald, and Andrea Ackerman, or Dr. Ackerman, and our Director of Operations is also stay over there.
And I see Jay Whitelock is on the screen.
Awesome. So, but thank you very much. Commissioner Burr, thank you very much.
Your turn.
And thank you, colleagues.
A little disappointed there's no teeter-totters anymore.
I'll put your request in.
We are very lucky, though, to have Groton Public Schools, especially my daughter went through the IB diploma program, and she found it very rewarding. All set? Okay, you can go to the next one. Just start off with a little humor. But, you know, serious note, there are many difficult decisions that will come during this process, trying to balance providing the services that everyone wants. I know a lot of you, there are certain things that you want to keep funded in the budget versus not having too much of a tax increase, so it is a challenge. Just a few key budget dates. The town staff actually start all the way back in October on this budget, so it's a very long process for us. I must get my preliminary budget to the council on March 15. And then today, April, by April 6, you do the public hearing, today is our public hearing. By April 28, the town council has to approve the budget. By May 25, the RTM has to approve, and then by June 9, the council has to set the tax rate and fund balance use. So it's a very tight schedule, a lot of meetings. I'm going to skip this one. And I will put this on the website, too, if anybody wants to see all the details, because I won't read everything. Just where we're at, for fiscal year end '22, Groton's currently at 25.98 mils. The average in this immediate vicinity is 29.6. The only one lower than us is Stonington at 23.85. Proposed budget is $148 million and some change, which is about a $10.7 million increase, and there's many reasons for that, and I'm sure it will change drastically through the process, about a 7.8% increase. Quickly, I'll go further later, I'll go into all the reasons for that. Proposed mill rate is 22.4. If you remember, 25.98 is the current one, so it's a drop of 3.58, which gets confusing because when our budget goes up with the mill rates dropping, that is because the five-year required revaluation process just ended, where you relook at the values of homes and businesses. And as we know during COVID, the value of homes did rise, so that's why. If we actually collected the current mill rate, we'd have a lot of excess money we'd be collecting. Management philosophy, one, either adequately fund the infrastructure, parks and rec stuff, or if you're not going to fund it adequately, then abandon those items, because we don't want dilapidated things out in the community. Prior to cutting any departments, first look at non-town functions. Don't take on new projects or services without significant discussion and thought on how we're going to maintain those. And then I'll go into this further later, but my budget does include use of $4 million in fund balance. Now, it's more than $12,000, but currently, if we did not use any fund balance at the end of FYE '23, you would expect to have about a 21% fund balance. If we use the $4 million that I've proposed, we'd be at 19%, which is still a healthy number. Historically, capital projects have been a challenge over the years. Historically, we've been spending, it varies every year, but let's say about $2 million, $2.5 million a year, and then you get some other grant dollars. That's not near enough to keep up with the demand we have. We've really gotten behind on things. And then when COVID hit a couple of years ago, we were right starting the budget process, and we basically cut out all CIPs that year, and then we haven't fully put them back yet. And then for this year, we had a road bond that we took funding out to pay for our roads. That has been used up, and so we've now fully moved road costs into the CIPs. That's a new item for about $1 million that was funded out of another fund. So as I said, we should probably be spending about $5, $5.5 million per year for CIPs to fully keep what we have and keep up with a lot of our repairs. My proposal for CIPs for this year is $8.1 million. So as I, we should probably be spending about $5, $5.5 million per year for CIPs to fully keep what we have and keep up with a lot of our repairs. My proposal for CIPs for this year is $8.1 million, but I do propose using about $2.6 million for fund balance out of that $4 million towards CIPs, and partly that's to catch up some on our CIPs to get, you know, try to get through some of the backlog. Now, what's been challenging is our last couple of bids we've put out, our, the price of materials, as you know, is going through the roof, and we're having a lot of trouble tracking what things are going to cost. Historically, we've been great at it, so we're redoing the numbers right now, relooking at everything, so this could change a little bit. Then I'm also recommending $1.4 million to offset the, just the plain budget increase. That's about lowering it by about .3 of a mil. I already mentioned the fund balance amounts. Just to kind of see where our revenues are coming from, I was going to say the fun part of the budget, of the presentation, however, when you see 70%, property taxes, probably not. As you can see, the lion's share of the revenues, property taxes, 70%, state aid education grants, 17.8%, thank you, and state grants and aid general government, about 4.4% of the budget, about $6.5 million. And the rest are pretty small amounts. With the fund balance, if we use $4 million, it's about 2.7% of our budget. That's just a graphical look at that. You can see when you look at all the categories, how the lion's share is the property taxes. And then if you look kind of at the purple, blue going to orange, you know, those are those state and federal grants, so that's where the bulk of everything comes from. I'm not going to really touch on this much, other than to say, we made a few tweaks for staffing, but it's a wash at the end, so there's not anything significant in that. Just to kind of get an idea of how big different departments are, the top chart is if you include the water treatment plant and the golf course, so basically all our funds. You can see there, public safety, 90 out of, there's 256 employees total if you count those other departments, 90 for the public safety police, 62 for public works, that does include the water treatment plant, and then it drops quite a bit from there. And then if you're just looking at general fund, you can see the difference there. You see, the, it stays, it's still 90 for the police, but it drops to 43 for public works, and they have their hands full, I'll tell you. Go next. This is just percentage wise, if you, you can look at this later, if you want to see what each of those percents are. But just to point out, with general fund departments, about 40% for police and about 19% for public works. And go to the next one. Now, where are those increases? I'll go into this a little bit more detail in a minute, but just generally, if you look at the top of the chart, general government, that's legal services, voter registration, town clerk, and town council, about $93,000 increase. That's mostly from voter registration, I'll touch on that later. For general services, it's an increase of $75,000 with, there's actually $112,000 increase in IT, however, there's some savings in other places, like finance. Public safety, about a $263,000 increase, 2.8% increase, I'll go into that. Public works, $272,000. Community services, $204,000, the biggest increase is parks and rec, and a $171,000 increase. Large increase this year in our insurance, both property liability at about $93,000 and $455,000 for health insurance. So altogether, for the town proper operations, including insurances and that, those things, it's about $1.5 million increase, or 3.9%. Capital debt and, capital and debt services, about a $5.6 million increase, with $4 million of that being CIPs, and about $1.5 million being the next bond issuance for the Groton 2020 plan. Education of $1.7 million. Outside agencies, $400,000. In our subdivisions, meaning Groton, Long Point, and the city of Groton, about $1.5 million increase. So again, total about $10.7 million increase. IT, that's just basically new contracts for software. Prices on the contracts. Public safety, out of the $263,000, $112,000 is, we have to, our current contract for body worn cameras has expired, is expiring, so we have to enter a new one, it's about $112,000 more, so there's payroll increases. And then just generally, there's been some costs with the Police Accountability Act that was passed not long ago. Public works is a variety of things for the increase, you know, heating and oil, $43,000. And just mentioning, by the way, we just got a notice for electric just today that we're going to go up by about $10,000 a month in electric for a new rate, so we're going to have to make that adjustment, too. So it's incredible what, how quickly these budgets can change. $59,000 in materials like salt for the snow, that type of thing, custodial services, a couple other minor things. Parks and rec, what we ran into, and we discussed this in the budget last year, they fund for the food concessions, for instance, at the senior center, the Thrive 55 Center here, it's supposed to pay for itself, but it was already having some trouble before COVID, and it tanked during COVID. The council decided last year, let's give it another year, see if it rebounds, see what happens, and it's only got worse. So we got to move those positions from that, a couple of these positions, to the general fund. And then increasing one parks and rec maintenance person by half a position. I already mentioned the insurances and capital debts. I think I've pretty much mentioned all these, so we can move on. I will mention the largest increase for the subdivisions was the city, but that's almost mostly for a C wall that has to be replaced in the city that we're responsible for, because we pay for those highway budget dollars. So there's a lot of big items this year. Just Groton 2020 school bonds, just so you know, our total debt that we pay our debt service is about $11 million, about 8.5 of that's for Groton 2020. If we did not have the Groton 2020 bonds, our mill rate would be about 1.86 mils less than it is, but very well worth it, so not complaining or anything, just pointing it Kind of where by service area, where the budget goes to, for the main town departments, 26.8% total, I won't read each of those off, education's 53.4% of the budget, and then capital debts, capital debts are about 12.6. Now, if you equate the increases to what it means in a mil, for departments, that $900,000 or so increase is equivalent to about a .2 mil, so if you didn't have the increase, the mill rate would be about .2 less. Non-departmental, the insurances, be about 0.12 difference. Capital debt, capital and debt, 1.2% or 1.22 mils. Board of Ed, .376. Subdivision, .32. Just to get an idea of what it really means with those dollars, move on to the next one. And hope we're back. And just to, we're, yeah, budget, is it up there? Okay, yeah. Budget season is a long, difficult process for all involved, and I want to just thank our RTM members and council members in advance for all the work they'll be putting into this. I know they've already been digging through the budgets and writing their questions to fire at us, and I look forward to progressing. Thank you. And again, this will be on our website tomorrow.
Okay, now it's time to open the public hearing. Manager Ver, do you have the, do I have to read this notice of public hearing, or is there an open the public hearing blurb?
You can go ahead and read it and open, then open it, but-
Okay.
I was trying to get the sign of sheets.
Okay, I'll read this. Notice is hereby given that the Groton Town Council will hold a public hearing on the FYE 2023 annual budget, town budget pursuant to Chapter 9, Section 9.3.1 of the Town Charter on Thursday, March 24th at 7:00 PM at the Groton Senior Center, and also via Zoom. The full copy of the budget estimates will be on file with the town clerk for public inspection, as well as online at the town's website, and the public hearing is open at Okay, first person I have on my list is Tom Olson. Just need your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Tom Olson. I'm at 188 Crosswoods Drive in Groton. I'm also a, the member of the Conservation Commission, I'll be speaking on their behalf. I would like first like to identify a capital improvement program activity, number A, planning and economic development, project B, open space acquisition on page 70 of your budget, which has a recommendation of a funding amount of $25,000 in this currently proposed 2023 town budget. Conservation Commission supports this project and the minimum level of funding as proposed. Secondly, I'd like to provide some background. This CIP was introduced in response to the 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development in the Capital Improvement Program. In the 2020 and 2021 proposed budgets, initial funding for the CIP was deferred to start in '22, with future years at a level funding of $25,000 per year. The '22 budget request was submitted with $25,000, however, the town council reduced that project funding to $10,000 level, and the RTM sustained that action. Additionally, the budget displays also show the town acquisition fund with the following amounts. In 2020, it was $62,000, '21, $73,000, '22, $47,000, and the current budget display has zero. The increase in this account came from the payments due in lieu of open space dedication that are provided by developers, and the reduction to support the ongoing, and the reduction to going down to zero is to support the ongoing Wolfbrook property purchases. Lastly, with a zero balance in the fund, I recommend that the council consider funding the CIP at a level of $40,000 to restore the $15,000 that was reduced last year, and also, and to continue with the $25,000 level funding in the future. Thank you for consideration of these issues and your deliberations on this project.
Thank you. Next, I have Chris Meany. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Chris Meany, 54 Nicholas Avenue. My husband David and I joined the Groton Senior Center, now Thrive 55, about seven years ago. It's been our social safe haven for us. We've joined the gym, participated in local hikes, we've gone on trips, we've had our taxes done twice, my husband's college singing group has performed here twice, we've enjoyed many lunches here, we have viewed many afternoon movies, we've taken advantage of the book and puzzle honor system, and I participate in Zumba classes, and recently joined the volunteer group, and work now at the morning cafe. I hope we do not witness or realize any staff cuts or program cuts. It would be a real shame. This center is a well-organized place, and to call our second home, there's no reason to fix something that is not broke. Thank you.
Next, I have Larry Spaulding. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Larry Spaulding, 156 Smith Street. Evening. The reason I'm here is to talk just a couple of minutes about the senior center, all right? I understand that there's supposed to be cuts on it, I want to tell you why we don't want to have those. We service between 3,000 and 3,500 seniors on a continuous basis, 150 on a daily basis. Our staff and our volunteers, which number 120, handle just about everything that goes on here. All of our programs are self-sustaining, because the people that join these programs pay into it, our seniors. And there's no reason to cut anything here. Our staff, you won't find a better staff anywhere. One of the things I just, I have an event, but I just want to point out, just to show you what we do here, this past December, we had the holiday kickoff that was here. It was all done by the staff here and our volunteers. We had no outside help. We drew in 600 people from the public to come to our event here. That was all done by the people that are here, the staff and our volunteers. Now, there's a lot more information, all right, and I wrote it all down, I don't have time to talk about it tonight, but I have homework for you. I know you got it. I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing, I really do, but I got homework, all right? Because I wrote everything down that goes on here, and I'd like you to really read through it and see what we do and what we accomplish here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Catherine Brighty. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Catherine Brighty, and I live at 68 Brookshaven Road. I'm a long-term resident of Groton, and recently became the Chair of the Groton Public Library Board. I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to serve the town in this way, and glad to be here to speak on behalf of our wonderful municipal library. The Groton Public Library, as I tell anyone who's willing to listen, is my favorite place in town, and the evidence of that is everywhere in my life. Audiobooks in my car, we watch movies from the library collection, and I generally have six or seven books at home, tempting me away from working on our taxes or doing the dishes. The library's online events just in the past few months have helped me with organizing our home, sort of, and introduced me to fascinating aspects of Groton history, most recently, the history of that Native American sculpture that used to grace the library grounds. Like many other patrons, I found the Groton Public Library to be a lifeline during the pandemic. One of the few benefits of that early shutdown and evaporation of social interaction was having more time to read. And the library staff, who worked through the entire pandemic, did a wonderful job of making materials available despite the myriad obstacles provided by COVID-19. Even when the library was closed to the public, books were available in the outer vestibule and via curbside delivery. I volunteered at the library's Bumpers and Books Halloween event in October. That marked the first time in 18 months I'd been around a large group of people, and what a happy crowd that was. Over 400 attendees showed up for the decorated trunks, candy distribution, crafts, a book sale, and the chance to meet our police department's adorable service dog. The costumes worn by both children and adults ranged from cute to spectacular, and the whole experience was a magical return to real life, which left me in an upbeat mood for days. Being on the board for a number of years now has provided insight into even more of what the Groton Public Library provides. The extent of outreach and the thoughtfulness that is extended to our entire community is truly inspiring. From book delivery to older residents who cannot travel easily, to crafts for children, that migrated to grab and go during the pandemic, to storytime, virtual during the time of social isolation, to a range of online events for teens and lectures for all ages, the library's been a wellspring of information and entertainment, especially through those gray months of isolation. In my extended family, we've laughed for years about being happy to pay our local taxes, because we all envisioned those funds going directly to our town libraries. I still smile with that thought when my husband and I make out our contribution to the tax division. One reason I wanted to speak tonight was to thank all of you for your ongoing support of the Groton Public Library. I enjoyed speaking with several of you on primary and election days, and was particularly moved by Mayor Melendez's comments about the delights of reading during Mystic's celebration of Black literature last month. Thank you. And I appreciate all of your work on behalf of our town. Thanks.
Next, I have Ian Thomas. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive, and definitely want to align my remarks with the previous speakers as far as supporting the senior center and the library. I think those are well worth it, so I'm not going to reiterate those points. In regards, I'm writing in a very particular matter, in regards to the Board of Education, and I am speaking urgently in the sense that on behalf of some high school students that are having to face a hard choice between either taking a big risk by moving forward and leapfrogging up towards IB or AP English level courses, or- and leapfrogging up towards IB or AP English level courses or taking a step possibly backwards down to college prep. We have a number of students who have been attending honors English courses for the first two years of high school, and now as they're entering the junior year, they are not able to progress naturally to the honors level of English in grades 11 and 12. I think this is a bit of a disservice. I also think it also creates a large gap between anyone who has been doing the college prep courses in freshman and sophomore year, and then maybe they want to increase their rigor but not want to leapfrog all the way up towards IB and AP. So like having the honors level English in grade 11 and 12, I think, is vital and needed and overdue, perhaps. So just want to speak in favor of that and encourage you all to do what you can to get that done because I know about 20 to 30 students that are falling into that gap, at least. So please look into that. I also want to, while I have the Board of Ed and the Town Council here, I would like you all to look and remember that we talked about this a few years ago, and it's been kind of a recurring point of conversation, but the Town Council and the Board of Ed can work together and look at creating a non-lapsing fund for the Board of Education budget, which would allow the Board of Ed to manage their finances with much more long-term planning and strategic type approach, similar to how we all run our households. When you're looking to budget a large project, you don't necessarily have to do it year by year. You know the roof is going to have to get replaced in about five to 10 years. You start budgeting, 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 tuck a little away. So I think that could overall help the town and the Board of Ed improve how their fiscal responsibility and, you know, enable to diminish the demand on CIPs year to year if the Board of Ed is able to kind of create their own little nest egg that they can put towards their in-house CIPs. So I think that's a thing that has been done in a number of municipalities in the area, and so it's possible. It's a matter of a little bit of research and then implementation. So I think it's a win-win all around, so I would encourage you all to put that on your radar screen and, you know, do the work and look into it. Thank you.
Scott Keelty. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Scott Keelty. It's nice to be here tonight to address you all and more on the Senior Center. It's a wonderful place, and I don't think everybody understands what fully goes on here. Maybe by the end of the night, a phenomphalos say it. We will. But being a volunteer is wonderful here. It's a growing group, approximately 115, and it's actually increased through COVID period. We'd like to keep the budget intact. There are many programs which are actually self-funded that will suffer. A decrease in budget will lead to a decrease in personnel, and the personnel helps guide all us volunteers to implement and get everything done. We're running great right now with the volunteers, the number, and the number of staff members to support all the work is really going great. But we need infrastructure personnel to implement and run the programs, which are supported largely by grants, donation, and fundraisers. So a lot of it is self-sustaining, as Larry mentioned earlier. Through the pandemic, the center still was active with rides to doctors, shopping, virtual programs, and outdoor activities. And some problems, some, excuse me, some programs now happening, I can quickly go through with you, and we work closely with the police and fire departments on many events, many fundraising events. Quickly, some of the programs, we have a cognitive safety and awareness program. This, we work with the police department for dementia patients and traumatic brain injury patients. This takes care of lost, wandering folks. So there's a registration and resources for families to help deal with this, and again, we're working with the police on that. Call and Connect is a program where a friendly caller will call people who may be isolated, and it keeps seniors connected with the community. We've had chili cook-offs every year, and that we, again, do with the police, fire, and EMS, and that helps fund Project Lifesaver, which is another dementia, autism, and TBI program, and it uses radio frequency bands for location if someone gets lost or wanders. We have workshops on financial exploitation of older adults, community-first dinner programs. We've served, over the COVID so far, we've served over 10,000 meals. Government food boxes were distributed. Baker's Battle, we've won a national award among senior centers for exemplary fitness, sorry, financial fundraising among senior centers, and lunches for Halloween, Thanksgiving, St. Patrick's Day. We've done a lot of community, things like decorating people's houses at Christmas time that couldn't, couldn't take care of it themselves. Also here, we have Club 55, which is a group of volunteers, and that end takes care of scholarships for high school seniors, which is wonderful, and that's fully run by volunteers. And a nice garden program, which is based on conservation, self-sustaining watering system. We put a timer in, safe water. Plants are donated by Community Share Agriculture. Seaweed and soil is from the town, and we're partnering with Grass O' Tech to help get some of the kids involved with growing, gardening, and doing all that stuff. So please consider not cutting the budget for this Thrive 55. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one letter that another volunteer wanted me to read enthusiastically. Her name is Terri Ziegler, and she's proud to be one of the 110-plus volunteers of Thrive 55. What a group to be involved with. Drop by the Cove, which is the coffee bar, and get a beverage and a bite served by smiling volunteers on Monday through Thursday. Once a month, drop by the volunteer meeting. The awesome supervisor will discover strength that you did not know you had planting in the gardens, hostessing or hosting at luncheons and dinners, or maybe joining a new program, Call and Connect, which I covered. Find out more about it by heading for the front desk, and you'll be pointed in the direction of a thriving volunteer program. Join and be recognized for your strengths and desire. Make Thrive 55 a place to keep on thriving for years to come. Hope to see you as a volunteer of the month and the months ahead.
Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Kathy Chase, 146 Indian Field Road. Mayor Melendez and council members, after watching all the budget workshops and reviewing the budget, I'm here to talk about the education budget. First, I want people to understand about the Minimum Budget Requirement, or MBR. You will hear about this a lot during the budget cycle. The MBR is the dollar amount that the budget is currently at, which is that $77 million that Superintendent Austin talked about. Once you increase the budget amount beyond the MBR, which they want to increase it to $79 million for FY '23, that number becomes the new MBR. You cannot decrease it going forward, even if they don't need that much money, and we really need to scrutinize this budget. A few years ago, when the Groton 2020 Plan was on the radar, it failed to be implemented at the voting booth on more than one occasion. Then the Groton voters were told there would be a lot of savings if we closed schools and build new ones to consolidate. We used to have 14 schools. We now have eight. We have to pay for these new schools for the next 20 years. Where are the savings? Look at the proposed FYE 2023 budget. There's a 2.22% increase over FYE 2022. You may think that is not much, but again, where's the savings? We will also be told there's been a 0% increase for the last two years. Not true. Twice last year, I asked if the $751,577 they took from the employee benefits line item would have to be paid back in the following years. The answer both times was no. In the proposed FYE 2023 budget, the employee benefits line is increased by $418,990. This tells me they are paying it back. When you must decrease line items to come in at 0%, that is not level funding. Those are increases that are hidden temporarily. Salaries and fringe benefits are the largest portion of any budget. However, this line item is out of control. When I spot checked the salaries throughout the budget, it is anywhere from $80,000 upwards to $180,000 or more per year. Some make less, but not many. For example, one position in the system is getting a $10,000 increase in the FYE 2023 budget over the budget amount in FY 2022. The explanation was the person is not getting that increase, as they will not have been in the system, in the district, for a full year. This particular position is getting the increase regardless of who is in it. That's an 8% increase. When contracts are being negotiated, all of this needs to be at the forefront of everyone's minds. This is not a for-profit corporation. This is taxpayers' money, and we must be good fiduciaries of that money. There are many new positions that are being funded, from what I understand, with the ARPA funds. When the ARPA money runs out in 2024, are those positions going away? They are not sustainable. That's like buying a house with a one-time bonus money that normally you can't afford. Well, how would, how do you maintain it? You can't. The school district receives lots of grants, federal impact aid, et cetera. Every person that works pays federal and state taxes, which funds all of these. That pie chart that was shown earlier, we pay for the whole thing. It's, we buy with our town, state, and federal taxes. Therefore, we taxpayers pay for all of it. Superintendent Austin gives frequent reports on the status of the educational system. It is thriving, and our young people are getting a great education. So more money doesn't always mean a better education. They are already getting that here. Groton is considered a distressed community by the state of Connecticut. According to the most recent financial audit for the town of Groton, unemployment is at 7.1%, which is higher than the national average of 5.9. Bond debt is up 24.4% and has not done climbing yet because more bonding was just recently, was just done recently for the schools. Without the school bonding, our mil rate would be 1.86 mils less than what it is. All of this information has to be kept in mind while deliberating on this budget. We are voted onto the council and RTM to be good custodians of our residents' money. We must spend their money wisely. That is our job as elected officials. Where is the savings? In addition, please scrutinize the town budget with the same forethought. Thank you. And as an aside, I am an RTM member representing District 1. Thank you.
Fred Van Riper.
Nothing.
All right. Thank you. Eugenia Vilagra. Just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Eugenia Vilagra, and I live at 76 Riverview Avenue in Groton. So good evening, everyone, town councilors and staff and everybody here this evening. We're going to be addressing the proposed 2023 Parks and Recreation Budget, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Groton Conservation Advocates. We are testifying today in support of the budget item, adding an additional full-time staff position to Groton Parks and Recreation Department. One of the reasons why Groton is such an attractive place to live is its many diverse parks where we can enjoy the outdoors. From the Paquannic Plains Park Fields to Bluff Point to the new Sasecas Nature Preserve in Groton, as well as the state and private land trust lands, has created a wealth of outdoor space that is a great benefit to all of us. During the pandemic, these parks have been especially heavily used and even overused as people sought to escape the confines of their homes in a safe way outdoors. We came to appreciate them as never before, and we also came to see just how fragile and in need of care they are. At the same time, Groton's annual Parks and Rec budgets have been dwindling significantly over the past 10 years or so, even as new parks have been added to its roster to manage. In 2009, Parks and Rec had 7.75 full-time employees assigned to the Parks Division and seven seasonal. Currently, Parks and Rec has 5.7 full-time employees and four seasonal. Meanwhile, Parks and Rec's responsibilities have grown substantially, and it has taken over many new assignments. The fields around the community center, the former Fitch Middle School, trails at the new Sasecas Nature Preserve, the Cop Family Park, Noank Park and Community Garden, Sparkle Lake Conservation Area, and Millwood Lake Creek Disc Golf Course. In 2023, Parks and Rec will add the fields at Claude Chester School and the trails at Maple Glen. Additionally, the purchase of the Wolfbrook property is expected to be finalized this year. These are all wonderful open spaces already getting considerable use, but without proper management, trails get rutted with erosion, grass gets worn off, and invasives crowd in. Parks start looking and feeling shabby. It doesn't take much to see that this is an impossible load for Parks and Rec to manage effectively under its present staffing capacity. Let's give Parks and Rec the resources they need to manage our parks well. What could be a better investment in Groton's future? Finally, we want to point out that the town has protected many open spaces because of their environmental values as well as their recreational values. At present, several environmentally sensitive parks are being overrun by invasives, which crowd out biodiversity, a critical value of natural parks. The Mort Wright Preserve is being overrun by barberry, which endangers the extraordinary ecological diversity associated with Eggleston, Eggleston Brook. Pequot Woods is invaded by phragmides, which is rapidly spreading. If we don't catch these invasives early, it becomes much more difficult and expensive to eradicate later. An additional full-time staff person and additional seasonal workers would help address this growing problem. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you today on this very important matter.
Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Manager, Councilors. I'm Zell Stever. I live at 81 Main Street in Groton, and I'm here on behalf of the Task Force on Resiliency and Sustainability. We'd like to go on record as supporting the proposed town budget, which funds the position of Resiliency and Sustainability Manager for Groton. The Groton Town Council, on March 2, 2021, passed a groundbreaking resolution addressing climate change, resiliency, and sustainability as a central management principle for all actions by the town government. After continuing meeting with department heads and other senior leaders in Groton on climate change and what actions might be taken, be undertaken by the community, the overall finding is that top-level coordination among departments is necessary, as many critical issues will otherwise remain unaddressed. For example, the installation of solar electric panels on all appropriate town buildings remains unrealized today in spite of the various energy studies and proposals made during the past decade. New school buildings are still without solar panel technology. New school buildings are still without solar panel technology. Additionally, solar, additionally, hybrid, and electric vehicles are needed in our fleet. There continues to be little focus on the long-term impacts of sea level rise on our infrastructure, our roads, treatment plant facilities, and how to protect these facilities during storm, flood, and extreme heat events. As you now know what the impacts of COVID-19 took, looked like on our community, we are just beginning to emerge from this pandemic, which has impacted so many people here in Groton. As we have said before, the evolving climate crisis will have no vaccine, no drugs, and no face masks to prevent, treat, or cure the climate problem that we face. However, we can prepare for and mitigate many of those consequences. In closing, there are huge opportunities and challenges before our community. We will save taxpayers' money and make Groton a better place to live, work, and play if we continue to reduce our carbon footprint and address our vulnerabilities to the effects of climate change. We therefore support the proposed town budget for this coming year. Thank you very much, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have in future proceedings. Thank you.
Next, I have Jeff. I can't pronounce your last name from Flanders Road. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Jeff Paprocki. I didn't come prepared at all. I didn't know that I was, what type of a meeting I was coming to. I actually thought somebody else was going to be proposing something to the town. I got an email from, there's a whole bunch of guys here. We thought we were going to a skateboard park meeting. But I, my kids, I have two kids that went through Groton schools. My daughter graduated from Fitch, and my, my son currently goes to Northeast Academy. And so anyway, I don't know, I had a big part of building the skateboard park. I was petitioning at the age of 17 to get a park in town. Eventually, about the age of 21, the town was like, yeah, we're gonna do a skateboard park. So I worked with town engineers, I volunteered my time, and eventually we got a skateboard park, and it's been kind of piecemealed. So to make a long story short, a lot of these guys and a lot of other people, wow, okay. I've met a lot of good people, like, through this, and I started off as something almost selfish of myself. I just wanted to build a skateboard park for myself and my five friends that skated in town. And now, you know, some of those people are elsewheres in the world, and I have new friends. And we were, we would just really, you know, like to see this park completed. I am, I have a contract with the town of Groton right now that is a four-year contract that is about to expire as a vendor for the town, for the skateboard parks, for, for maintenance. There's only been a couple thousand dollars a year put into maintenance of the park. A lot of the funding from the park has come from skaters. Our friend Sam Batterson, who sold his company Breaking Ground, donated $10,000 of the park. Donnie Barley donated time, and these guys just raised, what, $5,000? $4,000? But I know that there, I know there's a, there's a proposed budget coming up, and we would like to see some sort of money put into the skateboard park because my kids use it, and I don't know, I live right up the road, and I think it's a great thing. I also think that all of Sutton Park, the, I know the budget is for all of Sutton Park, I believe. I don't know all the details, but, you know, I grew up going to that park when I was my son's age. He's eight. And, you know, I've seen the playground change multiple times because sometimes it has to change. And I don't think that the town has really done much in about the last 20 years, you know, towards that park. I'm not very good at speaking, and there's a whole bunch of other people that sign. Even if my contract expires, I would just like to see in the future, you know, things, if it's not me building it, I'd like to see the park, like, you know, especially with the new schools are right there. I just think it's a great, you got Paquannic Plains Park across the street. It's like, and all the parks in town, you know, I go to the Sheep Farm all the time. I, you know, I'm on bike at Bluff Point, and I think we live in a beautiful town, and I just want to try to keep it that way. So, I'm out of here.
Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah. Good evening, members of the council. I'm Liz Reisback, 81 Main Street. I will be brief. I'm speaking as co-chair of Groton Conservation Advocates tonight, and I want to align our remarks with those of Tom Olson of the Conservation Commission in support of funding our acquisition reserve fund, which is now completely depleted. 25,000 is a great start. We hope you will consider increasing that to 40. Even so, it's going to take several years if you put that much money into the fund to get to a place where we can actually seriously assist in purchasing a major piece of property if we need to. If there is an emergency and a really important property is to be sold right now, we're stuck. So I hope you will consider increasing that, the budget item for the fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Justin Briggs, 136 South Road. I'm just here to support Jeff Paprocki in his statement. The park was finished in the year 2000, so I don't know if many people were working for the town then. So 22 years, it's still not finished. So we would just like to see that move forward. That's all.
Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Marcus Sminky, 37 Quarry Road, P Q. Also here for the skate park, support. A lot of volunteer time on the skateboarders. Spend a lot of time volunteering, raising money, and just like, the coronavirus relief would be pretty huge, for sure, and that's about it. I'm just supporting Jeff Paprocki, Groton Skate Park, and town of Groton. I love it. Thank you.
All right, we'll come back. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Faustel LeBron, 136 South Road. I'm here tonight just to piggyback on what Mr. Paprocki said earlier about the skate park being such an important part of our community in the town of Groton. I can personally tell you that I see three generations of skateboarders here. When Jeff was 21 and building the park, Marcus, who was just up here, me, we were about 16, 17. We volunteered our time after high school. We were all latchkey kids mostly, but we also got to meet a lot of kids from very, how do you say, very socio-economic diverse, you know, backgrounds. So we got to mingle with kids from Groton Long Point, all the way from kids, you know, from Branford Manor. So the diversity of the skate park was, was something that completely different, and it was, how do you say, not unregulated, but there was no, no structure. There was no administration besides Jeff and the other, you know, older skateboarders. I think over the years, we've seen people grow, and through skateboarding, through having somewhere to go and not just running around wild, we've all, we've all been able to forge some really great friendships, and kids, the kids that are raised, you know, five These kids were like eight years old, and, you know, they were the ones that their parents would drop off to hang out with us older kids because skateboarding sees no age. And we would, we were their older brothers, just like Jeff and the other guys were our older brothers. So the sense of community is really strong. Skateboarding obviously is prolific and is super popular in, in any community. All kids want to try skateboarding, and I've seen a lot of, lot of parents confidently just drop their kids off 12, 14 hours at that park. And the biggest, the biggest improvement that I feel would, would be, you know, would benefit the park and the community around it would be lighting. Lighting is huge, not just so kids can stay out late and party, but if we're looking at, in, in, from a perspective of public safety, we're seeing that obviously people will convene in darker areas to do undesirable things, for sure. So that will kind of exacerbate the dilapidation, the, the, the degenerative force of, of that, you know, to the skate park. So we need to have lighting to not only help the kids that maybe are, are out a little bit late, and they don't have to feel unsafe. And also, it'll obviously help public safety officers. They can just drive around, or they can drive past the park and see, everything looks good. So lights are a huge thing, and I think the maintenance, and like everybody said, 20 years, 22 years, the things deteriorate, and this is a big part of the community. I would hope that it's considered in the budget. Thank you very much.
All right. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jason Burton, 341 Pumpkin Hill Road. Want to point these out, which you might notice a lot of them, a lot of us are wearing these tonight. These are the shirts that we made to fundraise for the Groton Park. I grew up in Groton my whole life. I now have two boys, four and seven, who are also growing up in Groton, who I bring down to the skate park. Lights is, is a big thing at the skate park. Currently now, the only lighting that's there, I believe, was installed for the pond, which was originally the skate park. So the lighting that's there is not intentional for skateboarding. However, the park remains open at night, and people go down and skate in a half-lit park. We've all gotten used to it over the years because we just know that there's only one light, but for people who are out of town who come down there at night and ride, it is very dangerous, and I've seen people get hurt directly affected from the lights. Another thing is that the surrounding park in Sutton Park, not just the skate park, the sidewalks, small things like that, you can't, you know, my kids can't even ride down the sidewalk around the skate park because of the cracks and how overgrown everything is. It just seems like Sutton Park has had no attention in comparison to other parks in the town. So keep it short. I know there's a lot more people who want to speak, so thank you for your time.
Jade Linton. Just need your name and address for the record.
Jade Linton, 96 State Street, New London. I'm here in solidarity with all these folks who are talking about improving the skate park. I just moved here at the end of November from Seattle. I was a local small business owner there for eight years and one of the founders of a local coalition that acted as a voice for the skate parks in that area. I wouldn't be who I am without growing up in the skate park community. Some reasons why skate parks are so important to the fabric of society and local communities are, they're an all-inclusive space, no matter your age, race, gender, or class. And a big part of that is because it's a free place to go. Being in this environment teaches equitable and ethical behavior and does the, the D I Y work that is necessary to eliminating, like, harmful biases in our community, which are developed, you know, in our former years and social situations and from life experiences. The act of riding a skate park is a form of creativity that breathes feelings similar to like doing a painting or making a drawing or writing a song. That's why you see so many crossovers too in these cultures. It's a great way to encourage, encourage exercise and to get people off of their electronic devices. It's also a visual presentation of our hard-earned tax dollars at work, supporting the local community, the youth, and as these folks were saying, you know, marginalized communities as well. It brings people to the area from all over who are willing to spend money at local establishments, and it's a safe space that houses opportunity for local programs and events. And that's why allocating the funds for these improvements is so important, not only to make it safer, but this is one of the best skate parks in the area. When I moved here, I did my research. I looked at all the parks, and this is the best one I could find. And I haven't really met anyone except for all these folks here at the skate park, and they just welcomed me right in. Continuing to champion all the things I've just mentioned is really important, and improving the skate park also kind of puts Groton on the map of a town as a town who cares about their community and the youth and marginalized people, and will support a growing community of people who enjoy supreme, extreme sports for decades to come, hopefully for another 22 years. Most importantly, I think to me is culturally, this would be a huge breath of fresh air for the local community, and that's what we need right now coming out of a global pandemic. You know, these countercultures, like the ones bred at the skate park, are super important to a thriving community. And during the pandemic, we've seen a lot of these countercultures kind of struggling to thrive, and improving the skate park would just breathe a whole new life into this counterculture and this community here. And I think I can speak on behalf of everyone that we really hope that you approve the funds to update the park and make it a better, safer place.
Thank you. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Justin Sluzio, 138 Bank Street, New London. I can't say it any better than that. It's brought me together with all these guys that I didn't know. When I moved down here 10 years ago, it's kept me around the area. It brings people in. It's the skate park that I'm talking about, and I think you guys all know that. Thanks.
Thank you. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
I think I need a stool. Judy Monroe, 23 Ice House Lane. And I am here on behalf as president of the Board of Trustees of the Missing and Knowing Library. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. It's very important to us that you know about the wholehearted support that the board has for our very small but talented and really creative and dedicated staff. They create and deliver an incredible number of services to all of our community. Even with COVID rampant during significant parts of 2021, we almost, we had almost 60,000 people through our doors. We presented 253 programs. That's about averaging five programs a week for virtually every week of the year. There were also about 2,300 grab-and-go bags, which were often accompanied by online programs to be able to do the craft or the activity that was associated with the grab-and-go. We opened our doors by appointment and we were the only place in the area that was able to provide computer services, Wi-Fi, copiers, and printers. Because if you look around the Mystic area and surrounding area, that service is just not available. In addition, we had almost 25,000 Wi-Fi users during 2021. It's really kind of cool. On a Sunday, you can see people sitting on the benches on a nice day. They're huddled in the car on the cold days, using their laptops, doing a lot of things, using the available Wi-Fi outside our library during non-library hours. We're very nimble and flexible. We can react quickly to community needs. And what may be surprising to some of you is the fact that we do it all with a very small staff and a group of volunteers. Our volunteers, they change lights, they put together the desks, they mend and prepare the books that go on the shelves, they distribute flyers, and they do a number of other things which enhance the opportunities within the library. Our Friends Group too is also very supportive. They're also always looking for ways to be able to find events to do and to raise funds. Just as a quick aside, you can watch for them in the Mystic Irish Parade this weekend. They do, for the first time in a couple of years since they've had the parade, it's a library cart drill team. And it's kind of like doing a drill team with, I guess I could say, a grocery cart with a wobbly wheel. I mean, it's, it's very challenging anyhow. So give a cheer for the library cart drill team when you're watching the parade. But anyhow, I, I point out the importance of our volunteers because some of you may not be aware, we do not use any town services. Everything from custodial to building maintenance, to HR, to accounting, to IT, is all provided by library staff, by volunteers, and of course, professional contracted services where we need to. So therefore, when we come to you with our budget, when we're asking for the $150,000, that request is simply the $150,000. There's no other services that are provided as part of that. And with our colleagues at the Grotton Public Library and Bell Memorial Library, we want to be able to provide to all regions of our town access to a public library and all the books and services and community events that help enrich and really develop all the citizens of our community. So we really ask of you to continue your support for the Mystic and Knowink Library. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brad Warner? Just need your name and address for the record.
How you doing? Brad Warner, 1014 Gungjewamp Road. Who knew that skateboarders are such good speakers? So I just, I just wanted to add, I'm support for the, for the park. And I got three girls and I, I bring them down there and they ride their bikes and scooters and skateboards and they enjoy it. And I just want to come for my support. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Silva? Just need your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Silva, 100 Morse. I wrote something. As a Grotton resident and local business owner, I just want to voice my support for the skate park. I frequently hear young people in my business talking about how important it is both socially and as a form of exercise. I hope you can allocate some funds from this year's budget to the skate park. Thank you.
Thank you. Colton Harris? Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, everyone. Colton Harris, 44 Gall Street. I'm also here to advocate for the allocation of funds specifically to the development, preservation, and progression of the skate park. I want to echo some of the sentiments while weaving in some of my own story and experience and add to this specificity of the ask that we're here today. I'm 29 years old. I've been living in Grotton since I was five. And I started skateboarding around the age of six or seven. The folks that you see behind me, as was mentioned, the intergenerational impact of this cultural landmark. And I say that with a lot of deep conviction that the skate park is a cultural landmark in the town of Grotton. We have folks from all across the, the country as well as the world who've come to Grotton for the skate park. And so it being valued by the town is extremely important. We've had the likes of even professionals such as the prolific Tony Hawk bring his whole crew to skate the park. And they were mesmerized by the brilliant design. Because skateboarders are artists, skateboarders are engineers, skateboarders are some of the greatest architects in the world. And what we have here is a landmark that meets, needs to be preserved. I would also just like to add that it is this marriage of art, sports, and also education. And so hearing about the education budget and thinking about how we value youth and not just youth development, but also youth preservation, the skate park is a crucial part of that. And it happens pretty organically. And I would argue that at the skate park, what I experienced since I was a child was family camaraderie, but also a lot of social development that wasn't happening for me at school, where I was being bullied or trampled upon or not really allowed access to the skate park was my refuge, my safe haven, and it's been therapy for a lot of people. Space of healing and long-term forging friendships. A lot of the social development that we've had has come as a result of spending those 12, 14, sometimes 24 hours at the skate park. So I would like to advocate specifically, Jeff, who came up here first, owe him so much and everyone behind me. But his contract is about to end, as he mentioned. And so I would advocate that that contract gets renewed because the development of the park is really crucial that Jeff is involved in that process because he's, he's the genius engineer behind sort of the idea, but also how it developed over time, which has created a landscape for us to grow and thrive, and also expansion. There is space and room to, as you heard, to get the park completed, but also there's room for expansion because this will really not just develop what we're doing here as a town, but it'll also bring in, you know, tourism, so many things that there's other sort of power to that. So I would encourage you to invest in the future now. It's pressing, it's urgent. And so whatever you can do, know that it's of great value. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelby Lubinow? Just need your name and address for the record, please.
378 Meridian Street Extension. Shelby Lubinow is my name. So I am a Grotton resident and I'm also a marine science student at the University of Connecticut. I love Grotton and I couldn't think of a more special place to live. I'm here in support of the Grotton Skate Park. I wasn't even really prepared to speak. My friends told me to put my name on a list and here I am. But as everybody said, like Grotton Skate Park is really important part of the community here. Just, I think like one of the most important things is seeing how like young people like this get involved in something in the community, especially like on a town level is something that doesn't happen as often anymore. And like having people come together, raise $5,000 just on one event, like it's something that is really special, shows that the skate park should be maintained and preserved. And I think in your budget presentation, you mentioned that you don't want to have anything in the town of Grotton to be dilapidated. So I think you either abandon it or you support and preserve it. So I think that like, on that note, like we should really, I urge you guys to put money into expanding the skate park, putting those lights in, making it safe. Yeah, the schools coming in now. I was a West Side middle school student and a Grotton High student and those schools no longer exist anymore. And now having those schools all right next to the skate park, like it makes sense to put money and support and into the park where there's like so many young people right there. So yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, that's everyone I had signed up in person. We have a few people on Zoom.
We've got two, but the one is not on the list. Janet Downs is the other. We only have the Janet Downs and one other person.
Janet Downs?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Janet Downs. My address is 8 Cove Side Lane, Stonington. And I'm the president of the Board of Trustees of the Bill Memorial Library. We're at 240 Monument Street in Grotton. I thank the council for its generosity in previous years and I'm hopeful that it will act favorably on our current request for $35,000 for the next fiscal year. Next year is going to be a difficult one because it includes two state mandated increases in the minimum wage. It's certainly well-deserved by our staff, but it's going to be hard on an already tight budget. Your generosity will help us make the transition to the new higher wage levels. It will also enable us to purchase the materials and provide the services that the Grotton community has come to rely on from the Bill Memorial. In particular, it will ensure that we're able to continue the outstanding programming for both children and adults that we have become known for. Attendance at children's programs in particular reached an all-time high in 2021 and we anticipate a further increase this year. But as you can imagine, the cost of providing quality programs is rising and your help is needed. In addition, we are looking at substantial repairs to our 130-year-old historic building. In the short term, we will be relining and recapping the chimney, repairing a section of roof that has been leaking for some time, and removing a number of diseased and damaged trees. In the longer term, we are looking for funding for numerous projects, including replacement of windows and gutters as well as replacement of our handicap ramp. As you can imagine, the estimates to complete these projects are rising all the time and your help is needed. Your consideration of our request will be appreciated by both the Board of Trustees and the citizens that enjoy the services that we provide. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yvette Morales, do you want me in?
Yvette Morales?
I have a lot to speak.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, I can. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Yvette Morales and I live, I don't live in Grotton. I live in Waterford, 54 World Ferry Road, Waterford. I wasn't, I didn't know that I had to present. I thought that my meeting was going to be next Monday. It was about a trip that I wanted to take with my students to Europe, but I don't know.
It's a Board of Ed.
I was invited.
Okay.
I'm here, but I wasn't sure that I had to present today. That's why I wasn't.
Okay, that's a Board of Ed meeting.
See her on Monday.
See you on Monday for that.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's everyone I have in person and online. If anyone would still like to speak, they could approach the podium. But if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Bum Gardner, seconded by Franco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that carries unanimously. Nine in favor, zero opposed, zero standing. We are adjourned at 8:48.